Order since everyone is here. And we can begin the meeting, so we aren't here for a long time, hopefully. So I will officially call a meeting to order and ask you both. Tim and Teresa, if you have any. Changes or additions to our last minutes, I don't know if you got them, I sent them out to you guys after the December. Meeting, not sure if you had a chance to look at them or not.
Nothing comes to mind for me, I I looked at it a long time ago.
It was a long time ago, since we didn't meet in January. So. We can. Address that at the next meeting, if you want to check those be those notes out and then the the notes from this meeting to approve. Both of them at the same time, if if that's acceptable to you guys, Teresa, do you have a copy of those, I I sent them to your.
Yeah, I did see them, um, I'm so new that I'm just like, okay.
Okay, good, sounds good to me, and and Tim, you didn't have a chance to see him?
A long time ago, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I I don't have any changes from what I what I've heard before, I mean, I have nothing in my mind.
So can we say we approve those minutes?
I moved to approve the meeting minutes from December.
Okay. Teresa, will you second that, please?
Yeah, sorry, second, yes.
All in favor, say, raise your thumb or hand, give me a thumb, yeah, okay, we're good. Alright, so they do pass, alright. So the next thing we move on to is, oh, by the way, I have to say that. I. I won't apologize, but I will say that I, just by default, I chose to be. Come kind of the leader of this meeting, and then when we get everybody in place, we can then go through the. You know, who we want to be our our leader at the time and and the different assignments that we normally have, but.
Right, I want to be the first one to thank you for doing that, because I don't, I just don't have the bandwidth right now, but I appreciate you stepping up.
Me neither, I don't, I don't even know what we're doing, so.
It'll all come to you, actually. I. Have been in contact with someone who was on the board. For ten years, and she is willing to to apply, or she has applied to be. Come trustee again, and she's a wealth of knowledge, Pat Lutzenberger, she's a wealth of knowledge and. She has already got the books that were were put together, actually, she put them together in the first place. And she's been working on those diligently, so we all have a book that has some history and has policies and all that kind of stuff in it. So, anyway, hopefully she'll get appointed, and and that will be one down and one more to go. For our, to fill out our trustee board. So I don't see any public. Up for any comments, I don't see the mayor for any comments. So, we will go to reports. And Georgette, I know that you are also, we're thrown into a a role by default. With with. Us losing both of our. Our librarians for a time being, so if you wouldn't mind. Uh, telling us a little bit about, I know you've had some issues with the COVID thing, but if you could fill us in on what's going on with the library, that'd be great.
I will be happy to, um, we actually have a full slate of our, all of our staff is back, everybody's healthy and well, and. So everybody's back, um, we paused in person. Programming until the end of February, uh, mostly because. Staff shortages and then also people from the community who were leading the. Programs for us, we're not able to do it for a variety of reasons, um, so we just decided to to do a pause on those. So we're planning March first to go ahead and and pick back up on on all of that and and start in person again. We also have had a really nice slate of applicants for the librarian position. So we will be doing a, and when I say wait, we, it's Jandy, myself and and Erin and Heidi. We will all be doing a kind of a preliminary. Interviews at the end of this month to, we have like six candidates and we're gonna do a preliminary to kind of narrow them down. And then. At that point, decide, you know, who we're gonna interview for the full interview and and all that. So we're just, you know, we're taking it one day at a time here, it's going well, um, you know, I've had. Wonderful support from Jen, she has been great, uh, the community and the and the staff have been great. And, you know, it's, it is what it is, but I'm honored and and glad that I can be here and help out where I can. So I'm not sure what type of report Jenny gives, but that's what I have.
Well, I I there's other things on the list that she does every month, but you're not. Charged to do that, so.
I I do need to say, I'm sorry, Brad, I interrupted you. I have to apologize, first of all, when you were talking about Pat and the. Books that she put together, when Jocelyn was here, she had asked me to head a, um, our safety committee for the library. And look at our disaster plan, which was very detailed and still was. Saying that certain people would do certain things, and those people were no longer here, um, so. My committee and I got it all put together and we were really proud, and I was not aware, Jocelyn did not tell me that it was a policy. So we, um, have that and I will be glad to, I will give it to Jandy. For next month's meeting so that she knows, so that you guys can all have that and. And look through the policy and and I must apologize, I mean, I I didn't realize it. When Jocelyn asked us to take it on, uh, I don't think any of us realized it was a policy, I'm not even sure she did. And, um, so we kind of, we just revamped it, because like I said, people weren't here anymore, and there was some details of like. I was supposed to turn off a switch that's actually in the bay of the police department that I can't get to. You know, so it was so detailed, um, so we have kind of condensed that down. And I will make sure you all get that.
Oh, great, I just want to say from my perspective, Georgette, when I've been in there, um, it. The library seems to be functioning without. What with, doesn't appear to be very many hiccups, you know what I'm saying, sounds like it's functioning like it always has, so that's, that's good.
Thank you, yep.
And and I will also say, I I to to Jen, thank you, in front of everybody, because she's been. Tremendously helpful to me, there's no way I could have, or with. Been able to get the link up and all that kind of stuff to get you guys, uh, uh, on online and also helping me with. Navigating the uh, the reconsideration, uh, that has been, we've been charged to to, um, review. So, um, alright, uh, Tim, you want to give us any kind of a report on the city council?
No, I mean, I.
I get it, I I've attended all of them, but I get it.
It's an interesting time for the city, I think that, um. I don't have a specific from the last meeting, I do not, I'll just tell you what overall is happening, lots of discussion on Trailhead. The estimates came back way higher than they expected, all the, I think all the city council members are kind of in shock. They're trying to figure out what they're gonna do as far as, you know, forty percent of the cost of the trailhead is gonna be the the, uh. Driving range, three million bucks to fix a driving range, um, so I think that. We're trying to figure out what's gonna take to get it to where it's gonna be good for all suits, uh, citizens of the city, not just the golfers, which. It's been the attention all the way along, and so, um, a lot of the. I don't know how many windows break at City Hall, but it seems like for three million bucks, we could probably replace some or put some plexiglass up and keep it the way it is, maybe, but anyway, I don't know what you asked me. There's a bit of contention on city council right now with regards to how things are being introduced. We have some very active, some very vocal people, I think we also have some very calming people that are recently been put on there, and so, um. It'll be really interesting to see what happens, um, with both Trailhead and with, um. With some of the events that are coming up, or some of the issues that are coming up, I know that they're off and running, I know the city's working pretty well, I just, uh. Um, they give updates every week on what's going on with the Kramer overpass, which is on hold for now because of the weather. Anyway, this is their winter break, and it seems pretty warm out to me, so I'm not sure why, we can't keep that going, but, uh, there's a lot going on in the city, and I think they're. I don't have anything else to say, really.
Right.
Jen's much better on this than I am, but.
That's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Yeah, I I, uh, down on ongoing business for community assessment, I do have concerns about. Trailhead, the direction it's going, and where that's gonna put. Uh, the library and the needs of the library going forward, so. Discuss that when we get down there, at least from my perspective. And where we need to go. I, we do not have, our friends of the Liberty Lake Municipal Library Group liaison. Is no longer with us, but I happen to know somebody that is involved. With the Friends of the Liberty Lake Municipal Library, and she lives in the same house with me. But I asked her if she could give us a little bit of an update on what the friends are doing, and she said, okay. How about that, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna step out so she can give her a re- a report.
Alrighty, tidy. First of all, um, we receive, just to let you know, I'll tell you all the money we're getting, it's like rolling in. I know it's because we're hot, when you're hot, you're hot, and the first off of that, we got money from the, uh. Hang on. It's the American Rescue Act, and now hold on to your chairs, people, they, we got a check from ten thousand nine hundred ninety-four. So it's a lot of money and we're all really excited, in fact, we just stared at it for a while, because we've never seen that much money in our lives, you know, so. That anyway, we do, Betty Who Kennedy, who knows exactly what to do in regards to where money needs to go. And so that it's not, um, compromised by taxes and so forth, as far as our savings account, because we're a a dot org. And, uh, versus our checking account, and so she's adjusted accordingly, okay, that's not all. Rotary's has given us a check for their contribution from waste management, so we just received a check for. One thousand dollars from Rotary, I know, just keep adding it up. And we're currently having a Valentine's auction, it's in full swing, if you want to go online, go to our website, there's a little QR code. Could just put your camera up to it, and then you get transported to our auction for the Valentine's baskets, there's some really cute ones. Tom Solberg has, you know, outbid me on several occasions. For the chocolate one, and you know, I'm not gonna hold it against him, but. But anyway, just want you to know, if you're so inclined and wanna get a, you know, Valentine's basket for the one you live. There's a ton of them there and they're pretty nice, um, I also, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, I know. Two, 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 I know, it's exciting, we're gonna have our first meeting for our summer soiree. Because that's actually our biggest fundraiser for the year, but you know what, we're starting to get to the point where every fundraiser we do. Golden people, so, um, but that is coming up, and then we start, you know, so, you know, it becomes a well-oiled. Uh, event, uh, we also have new people joining the friends. What? I was shocked, because you usually, it consists of a bunch of us old people who, uh. No, what can I say, you know, it's not like we attract the young crowd, you know, but we've actually had people, uh, under the age of fifty. That are are starting to join the friends, so we're we're getting excited about that. Also, Kathy Weisbeck, I don't know if you know Kathy, Kathy lives at the library in the storeroom, is that right, Georgia?
Yes.
Yes, she lives there on Tuesdays and Thursday nights, and she goes through every book that we've been donated. And makes determination if the book can go into our book sales, which happen twice a year. Or whether they are going to go what's called mission outreach, now, some of these. Books are come in and they're old, and they don't have a scan, uh, what is that thing called, the scanner delete barber? Anyway, she cannot process, process them through mission outreach, and so they're, they haven't really had an opportunity. She's been saving these older books for like, I don't know, a hundred years now, and not that long. But, um, she has accumulated boxes of them, she sent a bunch home with me. And said, see if you can find out what their values are, so I spent a few days and. And looked up a bunch of books, I have five banana boxes full of books. And, uh, after I got finished, I tallied up everything that from the, and you're not gonna believe it. But the value of the five banana box books because of their value in regards to online value. Is over four thousand dollars.
Wow.
I know, shut the front door, but, uh, Pat Scottum, she's our VP, and she and her husband are. Geniuses on website type things, I'm, I'm not so much, but luckily, she knows what she's doing. And she has a friend, a friend who has agreed that in spring, she will help us set on, set up an online. Sales for our our antique books, because I guess there's a market for them. And some of these, I mean, there's, some of these are really old, um, we have some that are like, we have one that's nineteen fifteen. And, I mean, we have some old editions, first editions, we have, we have a Bible that it's worth two hundred and fifty dollars. Who, who knew that an old Bible would be worth, I know, it shocked me as well, anyway, so we, that's our plan. Kind of get that going, other than that. Um, we're just, we're rocking and rolling there at the friends, we have tried to do our meetings the last. Thursday at one o'clock, and we, it has been, we've been doing the hybrid versions, because not all of us. Have the capability of getting in person, and, uh, but right now, since Georgette threw us out of the library. No, it's okay, Georgia, we have now, for this month, we will be at Trailbreakers, they have given us space, so. We'll be partying hearty there at Trailbreakers for the Friends of the Library, and then after that, we'll meet up again at the library. And conduct ourselves in such a way that will, you know, make us look good, are there any questions? Alrighty, well then I shall.
Thank you, thank you so much for all your hard work.
Oh, golly, you're welcome, see ya.
Thanks, Sue.
There you go, that was comprehensive, that was a comprehensive res- report, thank you.
You're welcome. Now it makes me wanna go, and because I love old books, so I have quite a few that I find at thrift stores. Or just, um, antique shops, and I have quite a few that are first edition, a hundred years old. So now it makes me wanna go value them and see what they're worth.
Yeah.
I would never part with them, but I would just be interested.
I've become an expert now on finding their values, so let me know, I'll help you find it.
Are, yeah, they're really cool.
Yeah, Sue's mom was a extensive reader, and she has a t- a a library full of old books. And so, I think there's gonna be a lot of investigating going on now that we know how valuable some of them can be. So, alright, so Jen, do you have a report for the, as a city administrator, anything we need to know?
No, the only thing, um, you already mentioned, I received an email this morning from the mayor, um, uh, for a last minute addition to the agenda. For Tuesday night for Pat Lutzenberger, uh, to be confirmed by the council, uh, as a good trustee. So I have it entered into the packet as an agenda item for their approval, um, don't see any issue, obviously. Um, but yeah, I don't think she's received any others that I'm aware of, but, um. One is, one is a start, so that's, that's really all I have, I I guess if you had any questions for me. Yeah, that's about all I had.
Trustee applications, they've been here for a while.
Oh, you have a bunch of applications?
I have one, two, three, four, I have four.
Oh, well, who, who, who are those supposed to be forwarded to, uh, Jen?
I don't, you know, I don't know the process, I think they go to the mayor, and I don't know if in the past, they've gone to you guys for review. If, or if you have a designated amongst you, that helps interview.
I'm not sure that either, I I, no, Pat was here, she could answer that question, having been around.
Right.
I'm pretty sure she would know the answer to that, um, I do, but but I think in the future, it's something that we do have to have in writing somewhere.
Okay.
Uh, it that, so that everybody is pretty much clear about how we go about, you know, getting trustees. Through the process and then, uh, uh, I'll point it to the board.
Since I've been on here, we've never been involved in the application process, it's always been done by the mayor, and then we kind of hear through the mayor, who's kind of, so.
Yeah, and that's how it's done with Parks and Arts Commission, but I know, um, there have been discussions, um. Like with our city council and with other commissioners about them possibly potentially being involved in the inter. At least the the initial application screening, maybe they pick the top two, and then the mayor and director interview. The top two or something like that, so, yeah, definitely, I I don't know if it would need to be identified in the procedure and processes. Or if it's just something that you all agree on, but I I think the other commissions, they don't get involved either, so it's it's consistent at least.
Yeah.
Yeah. I will make sure to get to you, Jen.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, yeah, that's, that's all we have on our end.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Alright, so now we're on to the book consideration response, and as you all know, it's, uh, book Gender Queen. Uh, and, or gender queer, sorry, I I don't know how to spell, uh, I'm sorry, it's wrong on the. It's wrong on the, um.
Yeah.
Agenda, so we need to change that, but gender queer. So. Uh, the, uh, the patron that she's done everything and gone through the process, and so we are the next step in the process. Uh, we are charged to respond to her by February twenty-eighth, that would, that would be sixty days after her initial. Request to the, to the Board of Trustees to consider, uh, her request. I think you all have a copy of her information that she sent to. The librarian at the time, Joanne, and so. Uh. We've talked about it a little bit, but is there any further discussion about the, the, um. Request by, uh, the patron, and I believe her name is Erin, I don't know how to pronounce her last name.
Zazada, Zazada, she's a real estate agent.
Thank you, Zazada, thank you, Tim, um, but, does anybody have any, um. Anything they'd like to say or in regards to, uh, the, uh. The request?
No, I think we had, you know, between the email, I mean, we've, we've known about it since like, like thirteenth of December or something. So I feel like we've had enough time to kind of go back and forth, I don't really have anything.
Okay.
Extra to say about it, so.
Got it.
I I would like just to say that I think that, um. I'm I'm not pleased with some of the language in the book, I'm sure if I looked hard enough, I could probably find other books in the library. Um, I think it's a very sensitive topic, topic, and I'm glad that we have a responsible library that's got a policy for dealing with this. I don't see any reason from my perspective to not let the policies that the library has in evaluating collections of books. I don't have any reason to stand in the way of that, um, I think this is an important resource for someone going through this, I can't relate myself personally. But, um, I do think it's important to have resources or some sort of materials for them too, um. I hope I don't say anything inappropriate, because I don't want to be inappropriate at this particular time or any time about this stuff, so. Uh, I think it's a pretty sensitive subject, and I think there's a lot more, a lot bigger things to worry about this world right now.
Um, I I I would agree with that, Tim, I, um. Of course, we have all kind of talked a little bit, but I, um, I would. Say that Joanne handled it in the correct way, she provided the patron with, uh, the policies. Of the library and the American Library Association, of which we as- ascribe to their, their policy. And their, um, ways of thinking about these censorship, um, attempts. And I agree with you, Tim, uh, it probably wouldn't be the book, I, well, I know it wouldn't be the book I would go check out. But I know it's a, uh, we are a public library, and, uh, we meet the needs of a very diverse population. And, um, so.
I have a question real quick.
I'll leave it at that, yes.
I apologize, thought you were.
No, go ahead.
Could you explain to us the policy in which, uh, a patron can check this book out, who do they have to be, how, you know? Give us some background, I know it's in the sensitive section of the library.
Uh, really, anybody can check it out, um, it's in the adult section of the library, but the policies. Um, of libraries have always been, and our library is, we don't censor who checks it out. Because honestly, how do I know you're not checking it out for someone else?
Sure.
You know, in in your family, or a friend, or, you know, whomever, so, um, although it's in the adult section, it really is up to. The parent to know what their children are are reading, and, um, you know, we check the materials out. We don't question, we don't suggest, we take the books, we scan them, we pass them back to the patron and tell them when they're due.
And this book is not just part of our library, this is part of the network that we're part of.
That is, that is correct, um, we are at the moment the only library that has a copy, but our copy, our agreement with CIN. Is that we share materials, and so people from Idaho or from Newport, or, you know, wherever part of our consortia. Um, can put this book on hold and check it out, and, you know, so it can move throughout the entire system. You know, to anybody that that wants to read it.
Do we know, or would we know if, uh, any of the libraries or, or, um, the CIN have dealt with a complaint like this, or would we even know?
I can ask them, I have a meeting with them next week, um, so I can find out.
I don't know that it's gonna impact my feelings today, but I'd I'd be interested to know, just on a side note, if it's been brought up anywhere else, I mean. I don't know if someone was looking for this book to see if we had it to make a point, I'm just saying that out loud, but.
Right.
I don't know how else you would find it, um, I think my initial response to this issue in, uh, mid-December, like, uh, Teresa mentioned. Was, I saw a lot of really bad stuff on the internet, I was like, kind of freaked out, but then again, there's the internet, and, uh, once I got my eyes on it. Here's what it is, so.
Right.
Well, and I feel like, um, to add to the discussion, really, instead of focusing on the content, or, you know, what's inside the book itself. It's really a discussion of, do we support the policies that are in place, and the work that Joanne did to vet the information. Um, and the standards with which she purchases, you know, and the integrity with the protocols within the library. And so I think it's to take it away from the conversation of what's in the book, who affects the book, who reads the book, let's focus more. Towards supporting the policies within the library itself, um, because kids, kids could check out a laptop, and who's, to prevent them from. Going on stuff on the internet, just like on their smartphone in their pocket, you know, we have no control over that, so. Um, yeah, so I think it's more of a discussion of we are supporting the policies.
I believe, I I agree with that, thank you for that comment, that was, yeah, sorry, Tim.
No, you're fine, I would, I just, um, I'm agreeing with, I think that's such a logical way to look at this, where we don't even have to get into the content. Because I'm not a content guy, you're you're a hundred percent right, I appreciate you mentioning that.
I agree. Okay.
Well, are we looking for a motion?
I, we, we have to, uh, we have to, I think a motion is appropriate for us to say whether or not we have. Uh, approved, or we approve of her re- her request, or we deny her request, and we are. How do I want to say, we're, we are.
Responding.
We're standing with our, with our librarian's decision, and, uh, and the library's policy for, uh, the, the circulation of books.
We also, um, we also in the same, uh, motion, um, agree to send a letter from that Sean helped us craft, would that be appropriate to also?
Uh, I think they should probably be two separate motions, that's my opinion, but I, they could, they could be in one too, that, that'd be. I I think they could be in one, Tim, if you wanted to craft one, that would, that would have both of them in there, I think that would be great, because then we don't have to. Yeah, because they go hand in hand anyway. yeah, because they go hand in hand anyway.
Excuse me. My move that we stand behind Liberty Lake Municipal Library's collection department policy, which has been provided to this patron, and that we deny her request and send a letter that Sean Bous helped us craft, uh, well, it's been cleaned up with a date and, uh, some board member signatures.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, give me a thumb or a hand. Thank you. Okay, that passes. So the next step is to, um, okay, Jen, sorry, yes.
Yeah, no, that's perfect. Next steps. I wanted to share with you what my discussion was with the city attorney Sean on next steps. Um, he mentioned, okay, what, 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 he, he, me need, what I need to think about, like, what Sean needs to think about moving forward. If this goes forward and she appeals, um, your decision and your letter, then it will go to the city council. And, um, so at that point, um, obviously you would still be involved from the perspective of, you know, you were step two of, of step three. Um, but Sean isn't quite sure what exactly it would look like at, at a council meeting. Would it be a re, a resolution? Would it be, uh, an agenda item? Would it be? Um.
Workshop?
Yeah, workshop. Oh, gosh, please, there's no workshop. No, no new workshops. Um, but anyhow, we don't quite know, between he and I, we don't quite know what that would look like, so he kind of feels like it probably won't go further, but if it does, we, he and I are prepared to continue working on this and figure out how to get it to council and basically what the format of that would look like. And then, um, definitely would ask for at least one of you to be there in attendance, um, which you two, two of you already are anyway. Um, just to provide support, feedback and hear it firsthand what their discussions are. So.
These meetings are beginning so long though, I'm, I'm asleep at the end sometimes.
Oh, my goodness, four hours. Yeah, that's a lot. It's too much. It's too much.
Okay, so we have a letter and, uh, Teresa and, uh, Tim, did you guys have a chance to, it, it was reviewed by Sean?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I saw his, his draft of it.
Right, are, are you guys okay with that letter? As it's, as a printer, okay? Uh, it's been approved, so I hope, I'm, I'm assuming that's the case, that you are okay with it. Uh, I guess the question is, how do we deliver the letter to the patron? I know that Joanne did most of her communication through email. Um, but I think it's necessary for us to put our signatures to the letter that, so that they know that all three of us have a, have reviewed it and, uh, agree to this letter. Uh, do we have her come pick up the letter? Do we mail it to her? I need a little bit of, of, um, guidance on this one.
I think we can email and have it certified sent to her also, just to make sure she got it. I think that's be the, the smoothest way. We could all come on, shut, once we get this printed, we can each show up at the library and give our signature to it and make sure.
Well, if it's allowed, um, we could use DocuSign too. As a, a means to just do a, to get a actual signature, but.
And I might recommend you do two originals. So you sign two copies so that you have a, an original copy to keep and file, and I would give that to probably Georgette for Jandy to file, and then you send an originally, you know, original signed copy to her. So two originals probably just to be on the safe side.
Okay, so should we send her an email that says the board has reached the decision? Have it in a sealed envelope and have her come to the library and pick it up, or should we, uh, should it come from the city certified mail? I, have, Jen, you could maybe help me out with that one.
Um, you know what? Let me follow up with Sean on that. Let's let, um, let's let Sean weigh in, cause I, my suspicion would be we could send it from the city. Um.
Okay.
But he may have an opinion on that, so I'll ask him what he would recommend.
So could we send her an email, uh, to let her know, I mean, the hat, the timing has to be pretty, um, you know, has to be good on this. Like, can't send her an email and then not have the letter ready for her to, to view, so.
I'm gonna type while you, while you guys are finishing your meeting here, I'm gonna go ahead and type an email to Sean and see if he, I can't get a response from him either this afternoon or tomorrow.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yes, that does work. And if it, it, could you, is it possible for you to print out the letter there and then each one of us could stop by and just put our signature on the letter? It's gotta be in a central place where we can all get to it and put our signature on it. Teresa, can you, I know you're teaching all day long. Is there a chance for you to get out and do that?
Yeah, yeah, I can do that.
Okay, and Tim, how about you?
I'm always over by the library. There's houses over there.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, I'll let you know whether we need to go to Jen's office and sign or to Georgette's office and sign the letter, but I'll, I'll, we'll figure, I'll figure that out with Jen and then I'll, I'll communicate with you guys. Is that, is that acceptable?
Yeah, that works.
And Georgette, do you, you, you know if there is a trustee's letterhead? Is there a letterhead?
I do know that I can look and see if there is.
Okay. And I just sent my email to Sean, so I will let you all know what he responds with.
Alright, great, thank you. Okay, so the last thing on the agenda is the community assessment. And talking, I've learned, I've learned a lot talking to Pat Lutzenberger, let me tell you. Uh, we're, we're supposed to be giving a report to the, uh, to the city council, uh, in a, somewhere between February and March and looking at the things that we're supposed to be giving to them. It's pretty extensive, the things that we should be reporting on in re, in re, in regards to the trustees and and what we're doing with the, and things like that, and then also the library and how the library's functioning and those kinds of things, so. Um, uh, but having said that, my, my, I just want to bring up the community assessment. I'm, I'm more than willing to put together a, uh, a PowerPoint presentation to the, to the council for a workshop, uh, about the community assessment. I, of course, I'd share, we'd share it together and go through it all together, uh, but I'm more than willing to do that. Here's my fear. After sitting in and listening to everything that's been going on with the Trailhead, uh, my fear is Trailhead could get built and there's a huge community demand for community space in that, in that project. I am, and I participated in the, in the committees for the Trailhead going forward. I am very skeptical about a facility that could be built, that could take care of the community needs uh, for, um, gathering and those kinds of things on the budget that the, uh, the, uh, council wants to stick to. That, that's, that's my opinion. Now, whether that comes, is, comes to fruition or not, but my biggest fear is that in the meantime, the library's gonna be standing out looking on the outside, looking in going, look, we're sitting here, we've been on the list for a while, we did the, we did the, the community assessment and we're in limbo. We're not making any movement here, so. Um, I think we need to get that assessment thing to those guys and, and really really hammer some things that need to be done with the library. That's my opinion.
I, I, if I could weigh in, I think we could use that to our advantage, to be honest with you. I think that, um, we're not asking for a new building. We're asking to make existing, uh, we're asking to, we've got the money and the budget to have an expert look at this current facility. And so I think that by looking at that and trying to use what we have first is, could we fall on some pretty, I think we could get some, some, some support for that. Um, at the same time, it's not our assessment. It's a citizen's assessment.
Right.
And I think that, you know, with their word, what they wanted years ago, which unfortunately is too long now, but this was what they had asked for, was for this kind of stuff. And so as elected officials, I don't know about how they can sell the public. No, we're not gonna do that. Um, we've already got the money set aside to do it this year. Uh, they just getting that ball rolling is not a bad idea. I know where you're coming from, Brad, and I agree with you that this, this, uh, I think this current city council is a little bit shell shocked right now, budget. Uh, with some of the things that we've seen, uh, go on with this project, however, they've got to learn how to separate the two.
They have to learn how to what? Pardon?
Separate the two issues entirely.
Right. Yeah, I, well, um, so I know that you guys talked even before I got on the committee here or on the trustees about putting together a uh, PowerPoint to present a, a workshop on the community assessment. Uh, uh, do, do you still think that, that's something we should be working on, Tim?
I kind of feel like we should, cause I think we have so many new members of the, uh, on the council, uh, from Chris Cargill to Jamie to, uh, even, I mean, I think there's only maybe one council member including the mayor that actually were around during the assessment. Everybody else is relatively new. I mean,
Right.
especially, I mean, we've had, um, you know, Van Norman has got a lot of experience in the city and she was around probably when the library was created, which is fantastic to have that knowledge, but I think giving them an update on where we are, what we've done, the wonderful things that the library's been able to do through Jandy, through, um, Jocelyn, and now being carried on through, with Georgette. I mean, there's, there's still things they're doing today that were brought up from that, and I think we need to trumpet that and to a certain extent, because I, I think until, uh, was it like, like, uh, maybe mid-year last year, there's maybe two council members have never even been in the library. Now they, they've actually seen it. So, um, I think just having that, just kind of familiarizing with it, we could turn it into a report if we want and when Jandy gets back, um, when is it, when is she getting back?
Twenty second.
Twenty second.
Okay, not that anybody's counting or anything.
So.
Well, but I think that, uh, just giving them this part as a report coming from her on the current state of the library and then we can almost roll into it if we wanted to have the trustees there to do a PowerPoint on what the library's been able to do and speak to them and about them and the third person, I think would be a nice update.
Okay.
We don't have to ask for it at the time. I think we just tell them what we're doing. Tell them what we're gonna tell them, tell them and then remind them what we've done based on what the community has asked for. And so I'm happy to help, kind of help with that, uh, spearhead that I only, only came on in the, right when that assessment was hitting, so I didn't have any background to that before, but it was, that's right when I got on the trustees.
Right.
And can I add that, um, as far as, uh, the agenda goes, if you know you're going to provide an update to the council, the council has gotten fairly particular over their agenda, um, and how it's laid out. So just let Jandy know to let Kelsey know ahead of the next meeting that you want to update at, and they'll, she'll actually put a line under reports, boards and reports, or whatever the title is. And she'll actually put library report on there for you. Um, because we do the same thing with Parks and Arts Commission. We used to leave it on there as a generic all the time. But, um, we only put it on there now when we know they have a report to provide.
Okay. Yeah, one other comment. I know back in December, uh, when Sandy was, a-actually Sandy got that architect to, to evaluate the, the building, what could be done as far as remodeling and stuff like that. Um, I don't know if you guys remember that or saw that, but it, it is, it's part of our, uh, one of the emails she sent to us prior to her leaving. I thought that was an excellent report done by that, uh, that architect about what could and could not be done as far as remodeling of the library's concern uh, and space needs. Um, and I know that you guys also talked about a workshop with the, um, uh, council about the library assessment, needs assessment and, um, and I think that it would be really good, uh, in a workshop, Tim, for all of the new, um, council members to be brought up to date on the community needs assessment and also the things that have been done in the library as a result of the community needs assessment going forward.
I think you're right. I mean, I think that's a great point, cause then we can all, I mean, I I need to be reminded of some of the things that they've done. I mean, not that I don't appreciate them, I just, I kind of just been flowing with it, so I need to make sure. I think that's a good point.
Got it. Teresa, you want to weigh in on this? I know this is very new to, but if you have any, uh, I, do you have a co, I should ask you first, do you have a copy of the community needs assessment?
I don't.
Uh, well, then I will have, um, we have it in PDF form. Tim, do you have it in a PDF form?
It's on the website.
It is on the website?
I believe it's on the library website.
Oh, yeah, I can just take a look there.
I, yeah.
Used to be.
I also have it in a PDF form here on the computer. I can, I can send it to your, to your, uh, email address. Uh, if you, if you will, um, your personal email address I can send it to.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. That would be easier.
But you have to.
Since I have to log into the city one on like another device.
Yeah, I get it. I, I under.
Microsoft is like, we don't recognize this.
I am with you on that. I know it is a little bit, it, it adds another step going to the city thing. Could you give me your, your, um, I don't know, this is a public meeting, maybe you don't want to give me your, um, maybe you could text me, uh, that would be better. Could you text me your email address? And then I will, I'll make sure you get a copy of that.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, so, uh, Tim, I'm gonna start and, and Teresa, I'm gonna start, uh, sending some, uh, communication with you about things that we could possibly put into that report and the, um, uh, a possible workshop, uh, um, PowerPoint for the, for the, um, council. Is that, is that, uh, acceptable to you guys?
That, that's fine. I just know that, um, maybe Jen can help with this a little bit. We can't make decisions on things offline. You gotta make them all online with, uh, the public hearing and so I don't want to insinuate that we're gonna make any decisions outside of this.
Oh, no, I get it. No, I, I'm just talking about preliminary and then obviously it has to be determined at the, at the next meeting as to what actually that's gonna look like and those kinds of things.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. Yep, good point.
And, and also one other thought on the agenda, on the council agenda, if, if you end up giving it to the council as strictly a presentation, you're just providing them information and you're not looking for discussion, then we'll put it on the agenda as a special presentation. If you're looking for feedback and discussion with the council, then we'll add it to the agenda as a workshop.
That's a good point, Jen. I'll have to think about that. I don't know.
My initial response, I just want to present and not have any questions.
That was my first initial response too, Tim.
So there you go. We can add it as a special presentation, which is actually earlier on in the meeting anyways.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We're all the same, Brad.
I think we'll try to, we won't determine exactly when, but if we can have some things in place that we can discuss on the March, I think it's again, March ninth meeting, then maybe we can have something in place that we can add to the, uh, city council meeting, uh, in their, their last meeting of March.
Which is March fifteenth, by the way.
Okay, which would be March fifteenth.
Yeah.
Cool.
Okay. Alright, I have nothing else. Does anybody have anything else they would like to bring up?
No, I'm good.
Alright. Teresa?
Nope.
Okay. Alright, thanks guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for everybody's input today.
Thank you.
Yay.
Okay. Thanks, Jen.
You're welcome.